Everyone hear me? That sound like the mic's off. Can you hear me? Yeah, I'm on. I think it's on, the light's on. Is it good? Okay. All right, we welcome everybody to this planning board meeting that is scheduled for June 6th. And we've got actually fairly limited agenda tonight, of course, I mean today. I think their agenda's available for everyone, was that correct?
We, I think we're...
I know about everyone, but we... Yeah. So I'll call the meeting to order and we'll get moving. We do have a quorum. I do expect some of the other board members to be here today as well. Maybe they'll come in in just a few minutes, but comes one of them now. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda that's presented for today?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Second?
Second.
We have a second. Greg, any discussion regarding the agenda? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Did everyone have a chance to take a look at the minutes from the May 16th meeting? Everyone receive those? Are there any corrections or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Hudgens, a second?
Second.
Mr. Phillips seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries. The first item on our agenda today that requires action is a public hearing regarding a zoning map amendment. The applicant is Vivian Davis Carmack. She has applied to rezone tax lot pin number 8697 hyphen 44 hyphen 8038, which is also known as 112 Lost Trail Drive. I believe it's in Candler. It is currently zoned single-family residential R1, and she would like to have that rezoned to R3. Debbie, if you would, give us staff's overview and recommendation, please.
The applicant has requested rezoning of a lot which is approximately 0.33 acres. It is currently vacant and is located northeast of the intersection of Fairmont Road and Lost Trail Drive. The properties around this lot do contain single-wide and double-wide mobile homes, but the surrounding property is zoned R1, which does not allow mobile homes. The requested zoning would not be consistent with the land use plan update, as the update indicates that R3 is suitable for higher-density uses in mobile homes. The proposed R3 zoning would allow uses currently not allowed in the surrounding R1 zoning district, such as mobile home parks, multifamily, and travel trailer parks. If the property were rezoned, it could lead to the encroachment of R3 zoning in the area, bringing additional mobile homes, mobile home parks, and multifamily development. Therefore, the planning department recommends denial of the request.
Okay, thank you. Is Ms. Carmack here? Would you like to speak on behalf of yourself, please? Ma'am, and in doing so, please come up to the microphone and introduce yourself and tell us where you're from as well.
My name is Vivian Carmack, and I'm from Asheville. And I purchased this lot thinking, it was advertised and sold to me as a lot that you could put either manufactured housing, mobile home, double-wide, single-wide on. And so I opted to purchase this, to put my home there, so I could retire on this lot. And it, and spent several thousand dollars on the lot with clearing, water tap and meter and so on. Didn't know until I went for the septic permit that I couldn't move my house there. So the thing is, there's, I think, maybe only one other lot in this subdivision, it's the Lost Forest subdivision, that is currently for sale. And all the lots, as she said, are single and double-wide homes. There are no stick-built homes, there are no modulators. So it's not like I would be trying to put my house somewhere where it would really bring down someone else's value as far as stick-built or modular. I am trying to get the zoning changed so that I can put my house on this property.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Carmack? I didn't... You have, can I borrow that just a little? I didn't get one of those. Let me look here. Think I know where this is.
Yeah, it's the Lost Trail, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You already have your water tap?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got my first water bill and don't even have a line on the property.
Have you had any objections from your neighbors that you know of?
Yes, I'd like to object.
Uh, there'll be, you'll have time for that in just a minute.
Yes, and he is objecting because I have a single-wide home and his is not a single-wide, although the house behind him is a single-wide.
Okay.
Okay.
I do feel like if I can't put my house here, then it would be difficult, if not impossible, to resell this, because I can't imagine anyone wanting to put a stick-built house or a modular in the middle of manufactured homes.
Okay, are there any other questions, or Ms. Carmack? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing process related to this request to rezone this property. Now, the rules are such, you've got three minutes to state your position, and I've got a timer, so we'll crank it up. But please limit your comments to three minutes and come up individually and introduce yourself and tell us where you live. Do I have anyone that would like to... There you go.
Hello, my name's John Iverson, and I'm the property owner adjacent to the property she's talking about. And I think the city or the county will be backpedaling to degrade that property. And what it's going to do is set precedence for the other two pieces of property in that cul-de-sac. And personally, I don't think there's anyone in here that would want a single-wide sitting right next to their brand-new double-wide home. It's just going to degrade the value of the surrounding homes, and I just don't really want to go that way. I think the city had its reasons to upgrade that property, and for the county or the city, whoever's in charge, to backpedal on this issue, I think we're backing up. And I think anytime county or city starts backing up, we need to take a second look. And I'm strongly against having a... The single-wide is in the other cul-de-sac, it's not in our cul... There's not a single, single-wide in our cul-de-sac. She will be the only single-wide in our cul-de-sac. The other property is on the backside, there's not one... And I, personally, I would just rather not see this happen. And there's another piece of property, like I say, that I just want to set precedence and have this thing start snowballing. Next thing we know, every single piece of property, everyone's going to be wanting to do this. So we have to stop it sometime if we make a ruling. You know, let's stick with the ruling.
Now, let me make sure I understand this. Your property, you have a double-wide on your property?
Yeah, it's brand-new.
And it joins her property?
It's adjacent to it.
Okay. All right.
Are you on the north or south side?
Hmm.
North side.
North side.
That's it, right there.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir. Uh-huh. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this application? Again, please state your name and where you're from.
My name is John Zukowski. I own the property diagonally across from the subject property. I bought this property many years ago, and it's now a rental property of mine. However, the lure of that cul-de-sac was that it was all double-wide trailers and no single wides were there. I noticed that this property, or the, the subject property, has a diagonal line in there. It's been noted that it's a .33 acre lot. I just picked up in your lobby a pamphlet about septic systems and their maintenance. It's soil facts, it's from the NC Cooperative Extension. It shows a picture where it shows a house, an ex- septic system, and a repair area. On a .33 acre lot, even if it's a single-wide, even if it's only a two-bedroom single-wide, it's going to be really hard to put in a septic system, the trailer, and a repair area. I just don't think that that's something that's possible. I really feel for the lady that bought the property. I think that she has something that she could look into about who she bought it from, but I'd like to go on the record stating that I'm against having a single-wide placed on that property. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Again, please introduce yourself and tell us where you're from.
My name is Barbara Iverson. I live at 118 Lost Trail Drive, directly next to a gal who would like to move in. I feel for her, but I wrote these down, so I shouldn't ramble. I have a copy of the restricted covenants here, and these are good rules. Provisions were made not only to uphold the integrity of the community, but also allows for the future financial growth, if not stability, of the landowners. Next door to us, they just put some wonderful improvements on. We just upgraded from a 60-foot to an 80-foot trailer. Hazel intent, a leaf does not dare fall on their property. There's a cleared lot across the street. With what's going on now, should we be afraid of what they might be able to put in? We all have double wides, it was not a problem. Please help us maintain our standards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to get up and speak regarding this application for rezoning? Well, it appears that there is not, so let's open, let's close the public hearing portion of this process and discuss it as board.
I'll say something first. I live very close to this property. As y'all know, that I have always been a proponent and concerned about the changes of the zoning ordinance that don't allow manufactured homes anymore in R1 and R2s. And it's a problem. And this is another case we have before us. Someone's trying to have manufactured home issues handled, and their only recourse is to ask for an R3 zoning. In this particular case, I think that the neighborhood character of being double wides is an issue that we need to pay attention to for property values. So I'm not going to support a single-wide in a neighborhood that is obviously already supporting double wides at this time. The lot size is, perked or not, you know, a challenge, but I want to stress again to the board and hope that the commission would look at this again so that we have some choices other than R3 for folks who want to buy an affordable home and live in this county.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Anyone else have comments?
Well, this looks like basically it would be spot zoning if we tried to put R3 in that area. There's no R3 anywhere around there.
There's also the issue that R3 allows multifamily, so you always have to think of all of the uses that the property, if zoned R3, could be used for, and I think that would probably be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay. Josh, do you have any thoughts?
No, it's unfortunate. Rod and Joe are both correct. I don't see as how we can change the zoning, but it's an unfortunate situation.
I would, and I don't think I can support this either, but I think even if this passed, Ms. Carmack, having done this hundreds of times, I can't fathom getting a septic permit on this size property today. It's by the county. Anyway, like I said, with 100% repair area, which is required, I just, I see it as a problem, and I hate it.
Would someone like to make a notion, a motion, excuse me, to either accept or deny this application?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. To deny?
I make a motion to deny this request based on...
Ms. Wood, if I'm going to interrupt, if you would also include in your motion that whether it is...
Inconsistent. Okay. Based on the fact it's inconsistent with the land use plan? Is that right? Do I need to say why? Are we good?
As, yes, as provided in the...
As provided in the documents submitted by staff.
Second. Okay, we have a second. Mr. Hudgens, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify their support by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Sorry. Okay, next item on our agenda is what I think everybody's here for. Glad to see the hotel industry represented this time. It's public, excuse me, discussion of zoning standards for rooming houses and vacation rentals. For those of you board members that don't know what's transpired, the language that we proposed and sent to the county commissioners was not heard, basically. And they've asked us to take a look at it and come back with another recommendation, retool it to some degree. In late April, can't recall, April 25th, April 21st, Mike and I and John were invited and did attend a meeting that was put together by the Chamber of Commerce and included all aspects of this issue. We had the hotel folks, the B&amp;B folks, the real estate group that was in favor of the vacation rentals and so forth. I thought it was a very productive meeting. I know I learned a lot from it. And here we are today. Subsequent to that, again, the commissioners have asked us to take a relook at this issue. Having said so, I think kind of where we go, and I'm going to ask John and Mike both to make some comments as well. Where we are today is, again, it's back in our lap. We need to discuss how we proceed from here. What I envision, or how I envision us proceeding, is that maybe we try to collect some more information between now and our next meeting, which will be two weeks from today, with the goal being, at our next meeting, that is, the one in mid-June, to craft or recraft the language, if that be our pleasure, to send back to the commissioners following the public comment period. Basically, that translates in this getting back to the commissioners sometime in the month of August, it looks like now. So having said that, I know it was very brief, John, would you like to comment as well?
I think the meeting in the chamber, I think, I wanted, first of all, to thank Kelly Miller for putting a very well-rounded group together for us. I mean, there was people there from the hotel industry, there was people there from B&amp;B, there were people there that rented their homes, there were also realtors that specialized in vacation rentals. So there was a very good group of people. And I think it all gave us a better perspective on just the amount of people that are involved in this industry, where you realize that, okay, there's, you know, there's a lot going on. And I think that everybody brought a lot to the table. I think that when you look at the, from the hotel industry, it's, we've got a set of regulations that we've got to go by, and not necessarily somebody that basically sits himself up on the internet as, you know, renting a home as a vacation rental do not go by the same standards that we do. So, I mean, there was that perspective, plus the B&amp;Bs were kind of the same way. But on the other end, when you look at from the realtor side or the individual homeowner, it's, you know, I have, you know, I have a desire to rent my home. I may have purchased a property to do nothing but to do it as a vacation rental. And then you had the, also people that say, you know, I don't want to violate any rules that the county may have, so I want to, you know, I want to abide by the rules, and I think that they ought to be allowed in certain districts. So it was a very good discussion. I guess it went on for, I don't know, about an hour and a half?
I think so, yeah.
But, I mean, I think you'll hear today some of the same, I guess, comments that we had. So it's, it is a tough decision to see where we want to head, you know, in dealing with mobile homes. Do you have anything, I mean, mobile homes, I'm sorry, vacation rentals?
No, I, nothing really to add, except this board just has determined whether or not it wants to modify or retract the recommendation it made previously, or tinker with it and move forward, just as you indicated a few minutes ago.
A couple things that came out of the meeting, I think, that were consistent, at least one thing that's stuck in my mind, a couple things. One is, of course, this came from the B&amp;B and the hotel industry. You know, when you're out there renting homes on a daily basis, or even a weekly basis, you're not, and you're not compliant, you're not held to the same rules and regulations as the hotel industry, the B&amp;B industry, you know, the playing field's not level. And you're in the commercial hotel business when you're renting on a daily and a weekly basis. That's one of the things that came out pretty consistent. I think that the city has something in place, some language, frankly, that I have not read, that maybe we need to review. And I also think that staff may have some language from other communities across the country that addresses this issue that we might want to review as well, that we, as far as I know, we didn't review it the first go around. Debbie, is that the case regarding, you have some language from other communities?
We did look at language from other communities.
Okay, okay. One of the things I think that we should do is ask staff to distribute that to us between now, maybe electronically between now and our next meeting, so we can digest it. And having heard, hearing comments today, blend the two and come back here in two weeks, again, with the goal of trying to retool the language to where it's palatable as it can be to everyone. It, I know we have a lot of people here, and they're all here for that reason, to speak today. We're not having a public hearing today regarding this issue. We will somewhat later, but we do have a public comment period that's on our agenda as item number six that we'll go to in just a little bit, and certainly you can come up and comment at that time. Just go around the room. Is anyone, I know you hadn't had much time to think about it, I'm not sure, other than maybe having read Mark Barrett's article in the paper yesterday, you may not even have known it was going to be on our agenda today. But does anyone have any comments or thoughts regarding the process as we go forward? Or anything else related to the issue that you'd like to talk about?
I think we're here to listen today.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think so, too.
And maybe I might suggest if there's one particular interest group, maybe we could cut down on the time if one person could represent them, or...
Yeah, does everyone understand that? Joe made a very good point. If the interest groups could consolidate their presenters rather than four or five different folks from the hotel industry or whatever, don't have to do this, but it would save some time. Same thing with the B&amp;Bs and the real estate group as well. Otherwise, we'd be glad to sit here and wade through this. But everybody will have three minutes each. Again, this is not the, we are not here today for the public hearing related to this. We're here to listen, though, and digest your ideas and walk away along with what staff's going to give us in the next couple of weeks, with, again, the goal of trying to retool this language later on this month. So, thank you, Joe. That's a good point. Anything else?
Agree.
Okay, then we'll move off that item, which is item number five on the agenda, and we'll go to item six, which is the public comment item. Again, if you would, if you'd like to come up, speak in the microphone, introduce yourself, tell us where you're from and who you represent, and limit it to three minutes. So I will open the public comment period of this meeting today. Someone like to come up?
Hey, Mike? Where are you?
My name's Mike Buttram. I represent the Asheville Board of Realtors. I think it's important to point out that we have members that are on both sides of this issue. But we work by committee and majority rules, and we had made a resolution that was given to the commissioners some while back, and I'm not sure it ever came before this board. So I thought I'd just take a minute and read this, so it summarizes it in a sense. Whereas the new ordinance impacts negatively real estate sales within the county by eliminating second-home purchasers who want to rent their home after purchase, and whereas many subdivisions in the county already have their own covenants and restrictions that apply to rental properties, the new county ordinance directly conflicts with some of these various restrictions in place within the subdivision, and whereas the new ordinance is difficult to enforce and the enforcement is complaint-driven, only which makes it difficult to apply the ordinance within the county and punishes the honest and rewards the dishonest who do not abide by the county ordinances. And whereas the new ordinance impacts the overall economy of the county by reducing tourist dollars and decreasing county revenue in the form of lower sales and occupancy tax. And whereas real estate firms within the county who handle vacation rentals are financially harmed by this ordinance, and whereas the lack of rental home availability for people wanting to rent mountain cabins for an authentic mountain experience rather than a hotel-motel experience drives tourists to rent in other counties. That was resolved by our board of directors and offered to the county commissioners. And that basically summarizes, I think, the position. We certainly understand the other side of the issue, but the reality is, if we ever opened up vacation rentals to the community, it would destroy the communities. Quite honestly, and I think we all know that there are a great number of rentals everywhere in our city and county, and a great number of those are vacation rentals, and they've been around forever, the issue, of course, associated with it. I'll be happy to give you copies if you so desire, and I appreciate the opportunity.
I'd like to have one, at least. Okay. Okay, anyone else?
My name's Herman Turk. I'm the general manager of the Renaissance Hotel, and I've been in Asheville 11 years, and I was a member of the TDA board for approximately eight years. And the position, a bit of the position for me as a hotelier, obviously, we spend many, many hours and many, many dollars abiding by all the regulations that we're required to abide by, from a life safety standpoint, from a health inspection standpoint, business licenses, utility rates, et cetera, et cetera. And so we invest tremendous sums of money into our businesses, and while we're not totally opposed to the, to the vacation rentals, the whole notion of daily rentals certainly seems to be one that our industry provides for. We also have, we have hotel lodging products that meet the needs of the daily rental, the extended stay rental, our guests or people that want to come in for any period of time. And so we would just urge you to make sure that the language that's crafted for this takes our industry into account, and, as well as the life safety issues and health issues, health inspection issues, business licensing, that we all have to abide by and that we all graciously do. So there's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? Please come forward.
I'm Barbara Melton. I'm the vice president of Coalition of Asheville Neighborhoods. We represent something around 65 different neighborhoods in the city of Asheville. We fought this rabbit with the city of Asheville, didn't fight it, we worked with them, simply because we had realtors, bankers, developers, contractors, you name it, we had it. We fought this rabbit for three years in lengthy meetings. When it all came down to the final thing, the city of Asheville only allows this in commercial and other non-residential areas because, please think, that the bed and breakfast, the hotels and so forth have taxes they have to pay that these folks don't. You also have to remember that when it's complaint-driven, who are you going to send? Y'all don't have the money to hire extra enforcement personnel, and a law's only as good as the enforcement that is in place. And that doesn't matter if it's county or city. If it was a good economy and we could hire enough folks to enforce this and have someone check these, because the Montford community has been inundated with them for years and have had complaint after complaint after complaint. We had two in the Isaiah Road area of East Asheville that we had shut down, I'm sure they're probably running up again, had one on Edwin Place that was a protracted fight that we finally got sold and the folks moved into my neighborhood. But, I don't have a problem with it if we have the enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. If you don't, don't do it. Do not put this on residential folks to do the job of a city or a county inspector. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Let me catch the lady in the middle first, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little confused at first because I thought, I'm sorry.
Please state your name.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. Marsh is zero up, I live in Buncombe County.
Thank you, Marsh.
I thought that we were going to be talking about the use issues more than we were the definitional issues, which seems to be one of the larger portions that's before the board right now. But, putting that aside, about how, what you call it and how you define it and how many units, et cetera, et cetera, I am much more concerned about what zones you are going to permit vacation rentals in as a permitted use. Let me, it would be easier for me to read what I'm thinking than for you to try to speak off the top of my head. The county zoning ordinance was created to provide an organized land use plan recognizing the need for both stability and growth. The language of defining residential districts, RLDR1 and R2, makes clear that they were created with a recognition of the need to provide areas for individual family neighborhoods, as well as to address problems with topography and public services. You are now proposing to change the very essence of those districts by allowing vacation rentals as a permitted use. Hotels are excluded from all residential districts. Vacation rentals have similar limitations but are also allowed in the R3 and neighborhood service districts. In none of these places, though, is there an expectation of the non-disturbance characteristics of the other residential zones. Vacation rentals serve the same function as hotels, except on a smaller scale. Negative impacts from vacation rentals in a single-family residential district have the potential to be the same as a hotel. Noise, parking problems, increased traffic, inadequate waste control, and general disturbance. In addition, lack of the typical onsite management that a hotel has will make it considerably harder for an immediate response to problems at vacation rentals. Decisions by the North Carolina Supreme Court addressing zoning modifications, including Clear Good Neighbors v. South Davidson, Township of Denton, Blades v. City of Raleigh, and Crisman v. Guilford County, all stated that the zoning authority must consider compatibility, and that is the key issue, compatibility. Must consider compatibility of the proposed rezoning with previously enumerated designs and objectives, and that there must be a clear showing of a reasonable basis for rezoning. These opinions later became the basis for state legislation passed in 2005, which specifically demanded that there be both consistency with previously created plans and a clear showing of a reasonable basis for zoning decisions. Within those parameters, we must ask whose interest is served by expanding the number of districts where vacation rentals are a permitted use. Clearly, that use is incompatible with the family-based residential districts the county was so careful to protect, and entirely at odds with an organized, well-structured approach to land use planning that was the basis for enacting the ordinance in the first place. Simply put, this change, this amendment to the use, would serve the interests of a few at the expense of many, and therefore, I request that you withdraw your support to amend the ordinance to permit vacation rentals in other districts and that you advise the commissioners immediately of that decision. One other thing, please, think about this on a personal level. We all talk about this in the greater objective of what the ordinance is, think about how you would feel if a vacation rental were next to you. How would that affect the use and enjoyment of the property by you and your family? I think you know the answer to that. It would be a tremendous disturbance. You thought about the zoning ordinance for three years, please stick with, I will zip it in one second.
Okay.
You worked, long enough, yes. You worked, you can't keep a lawyer from talking. You worked hard enough and long enough to come up with the plan, the integrated uses, what fits here, what fits there. Please don't do a piecemeal approach. You just did the right decision on the R3 change, that's the same problem you've got here. Please don't do it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Again, please state your name and where you're from.
My name is Debbie Applewhite, I live in Asheville. I am a realtor, a realtor who opposes scattered-site vacation rentals. So, I'm sorry I wasn't included in the discussion, it might have been more fun. I have experienced vacation rentals in another community, and the way they dealt with it was to kind of bunch things. Because when it comes to vacation rentals, I recently read a letter from an owner of a B and B, and it, I felt as though she was nominating her renters for sainthood. I only wish that were true. My experience is that people behave, behave, for two reasons. Number one, if there's supervision. Number two, if they have a little skin in the game. Now, by skin in the game, I'm talking about money. When it comes to vacation rentals, they don't have much money in that game. And if it's scattered site, there's no supervision. I understand that one of the reasons this has come up is that vacation rentals exist all over the county, and because they're in violation, it's how do we deal with this? Well, the easiest way to deal with it is to make it legal all over the county. The other argument that I've heard is that this makes easier someone to qualify for a mortgage for a second home. That, unless it is very tight circumstances, is not true. Not true that it's easier to get a mortgage for a second home. And because this is scattered site, you don't have supervision. What you are doing without policing is to ask the neighbors to police, and very frankly, suitcases make lousy neighbors. I certainly hope you will reject this.
Thank you very much.
I'm Robert Brown, I live in Butler Mountain area, southeast of Asheville, and I'm currently experiencing a vacation rental in the area, and not in my subdivision, but the traffic and the people pass through and it's nearby. There are a lot of things that, I guess that the public wasn't represented at the Chamber of Commerce operation. It was just special interests that are involved, is that right?
I won't get into the discussion because you're limited to three minutes anyway, and I don't want to take your time, but it was a broad cross-section of folks there.
Was it, was it individuals? Well, it has been indicated by the county attorney's office, I think, that what we in subdivisions need to do is just enforce our covenants. And I say to that, show me a covenant that specifically prohibits vacation rentals. They don't exist, or rarely, if at all. And so, if you do this, if you take this action, you put the authority of the county, to a certain extent, behind the people that would be our defendants if we decide to have to take them to court to enforce our covenants. So, what we don't need is the county against us in an action to enforce a covenant, and that's what it would amount to. We've got people in this particular vacation rental that have used firearms against the covenants in the neighborhood, and a number of other things. We've had people bust in for a party at this place, a one-night party, and a raucous party at that, and so, this is going in the wrong direction. This is supposed to be a neighborhood, as was said earlier, for family living, and it's totally inappropriate to mix this, I consider it a version of spot zoning, again. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Bob Gans, I live in the same Fairview community that the previous Bob does. I'm not going to sit here and repeat a lot of what he said, because I could, and the factors that occur in that particular house are a problem for the neighbors. As someone else said, the neighbors are basically the only enforcement, and basically what it comes down to is our safety and our security is at risk. And you have a responsibility here to think beyond just the commercial interests which you've heard from, and think about the residential perspective. Okay? And I certainly hope that you will. The broader issue that Bob alluded to on a couple of individual examples is that the industry here, the realtors who are for it, the vacation homeowners, talk about the demographic. They talk about the demographic being older folks who aren't here to party, in fact...
Are you Mr. Barrett?
Okay. In Mr. Barrett's article, they talked about they're not beach partiers. Well, it's probably true for 90% of them, but it's the other 10% of them that give us problems. In the case of the one in our area, you know, I don't know who these people are that are partying, but in the last year, we've had three of them. We have teens walking around the area and pre-teens who are scared by what's going on in that house. It really is having an impact on our community. I certainly don't think it's appropriate in this type of community, which, by the way, is an RLD. You know, and I certainly would like to see you withdraw your proposal and leave the zoning the way it is. However, if you do decide you're looking for some political middle ground, I would hope that at very least you give us regulations that protect our safety and security, that prevent these people from having 10 or 12 cars in front of a single vacation rental, and in our community, 10 or 12 cars running by has a significant impact on traffic. So, I certainly urge you to turn it down, or at very least, put appropriate regulations that protect the safety and the security of the homeowners and residents in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gans.
Hi, my name is Paige Henrietta, and I, well, I own property in the Butler area that these two gentlemen were just talking about. And my lot, which we were hoping to build on, is right beside the house that they're talking about that has become a vacation rental. I'm also on the board of the association. We have gone round and round for hours and hours and hours with this problem in our community. Right now, we are at $5,000 in legal expenses trying to deal with this problem. That is significant. We have not come to a resolution yet, we're still working on it, and I am just here to ask you to help us with that, because like some other women pointed out, it's incompatible with our neighborhood. Our neighborhood, people bought up there to live in a gated community. Our roads are privately, we pay for our roads ourselves, they're not state-maintained. We do not have a guard at, or feel like we need to have a guard or could afford to have a guard placed at our gate, like some of the other beach rental properties or other rental properties. My limited experience with rental properties, my father-in-law owns one, and he tells me how things are broken, how things are stolen, repeated nuisance problems that go on rental properties, and I think in general, people, they don't have a responsibility to that property, so they don't really care about it. My concern where we are is we do not have water on the mountain, no city water. We have wells. My concern are having transients in our neighborhood with fires. A lot of times when we have the dry periods, fires on a mountain could wipe out our whole mountain. We do not have water. The nearest hydrant is on Webb Creek Road, which is miles and miles down the mountain. Significant problem, so I am just here to ask you to please retract your vacation rentals. I'm in, I'm sorry, LRD, whatever. Yes, thank you.
I'm Dewey Andrew, and I live in the Fairview community also. I'm speaking on behalf of, or on my behalf, about three different problems, three different areas. As a developer, we, and I've developed a few subdivisions in here in Henderson County, we'd spend a lot of money to try to sell lots and houses, and we put restrictions on our development so that we can. And most of the restrictions are to limit business ownership in the communities, as well as things like this. So, in my opinion, this is operating a business in a community where it shouldn't be. So, as a developer, I'd certainly be against it, because it certainly doesn't help you to sell a lot to someone and then it come back at you later and them complaining about, well, you sold me a lot and a house, and now I've got a business next to me. I'm also a homeowner in the community, so I'm against having something next to me or near me that's a business or an overnight rental. Also, I'm a partner in a hotel business. The hotels certainly are under a lot of restrictions, they have to do a lot of things for public safety, they have to pay a lot of taxes, they have to do other things that these, the people that are renting on a daily basis in a development do not. So, I would certainly urge you not to pass this in the way it is now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dewey.
My name is Liz Widerhold, I spoke to you all during the last hearing, I'll try not to repeat myself because you've heard enough. I support, in general, the changes to the ordinance. There is one thing that I missed altogether on first reading of this, and that was that the permitted use table actually puts in new restrictions in the open use in some of the non-residential districts, makes a person who owns two or more vacation rentals move into a conditional use, which we didn't discuss, and nobody discussed, but I think is an issue, because these are open use districts. And I personally own two vacation rentals, if I opened a third vacation rental, I would have to make that a conditional use, and I'm out in the middle of nowhere. So, I don't know that that was intended, but I noticed that on the table later after that hearing. As far as this hearing is concerned, or I'm sorry, this issue is concerned in this comment period today, the issue that brought it back here is the concern from the hotel and bed and breakfast industry that this is something of unfair competition primarily. Nothing really could be further from the truth. Vacation rental guests are a special group of people who are planning... Vacation rental guests are a special group of people who are planning a special experience, a special trip. They are first and foremost wanting privacy, which they can't get in a bed and breakfast or in a hotel. They don't want to share any space with other people. They want to cook their own meals. Many are families or extended families that want to cook their own breakfast, lunch, that type of thing. And they often want indoor, outdoor, private space where they can play or gather or whatever like that. They can't get those things in another industry, and so therefore, that's why vacation rental demand has developed. If they were entirely prohibited in our area, would these people go to hotels? They wouldn't. They would go somewhere else. They would go to Lake Lorre or somewhere else where they can have the experience they're looking for, because what they're looking for is not just a place to sleep for a night. They're looking for an experience. Will there be a sudden surge in vacation rentals? No. A quick survey of the internet shows that we have somewhere around 1,500 advertised. I'd say some of those are duplicates, so maybe 1,200, something like that. Those are going to, some of those are going to age out. The typical property owner stays in the business for less than five years. And they purchased the home because they wanted to do retirement, and so they wanted to rent the home until they could retire. They can't sell the home, and they're sort of stuck. They don't want it to go into foreclosure, and so they decide they'll rent until they can sell, et cetera. Or they could also be in a home exchange or a home swap program, which is pretty common internationally, and that actually, I believe, would fall under this ordinance, the way that it's crafted. If they can't use their home for a vacation rental, they will use it for a long-term rental. And I want to emphasize that I think every neighborhood should consider seriously, I own both long-term rentals and vacation rentals, and I would far rather have a vacation rental next door to me than a long-term rental. The final thing I would say is, this is not the city. We don't compete with the city. We're out in the middle of nowhere. We chose to live in the county because it's the county. I would suggest, as you look at a modification, that perhaps in deference to the hotel industry and bed and breakfast, that the definition be changed to which are rented for two nights or more to tourists, because no one in the vacation rental industry rents for one night. It's too much work. It's not the same as a hotel where you have the cleaning staff and that kind of thing. So that would be a very simple fix that may help somewhat in the overnight stays, and that we look at the permitted use table to get back up open use.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Winkenwerter. Again, I'll ask everyone to please limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm all, my name is John Winkenwerter. I have Hampton Inn here, as well as Homewood Suites Hilton. Herman Turk from the Renaissance spoke in regards to hotels. First, let me say thank you for letting me speak to this board. I'd like to dispel a couple of myths. The idea that a vacation rental person is different than a person that stays in some type of hotel is incorrect. We go on, my family, we go on two beach trips a year. One time, we stay in a hotel. The next, the other trip, we stay in a vacation rental on the beach. We're the same family. We're the same demographic. So the idea that it's a different demographic is wrong. Secondly, we, as well as Mr. Stordo over here with Biltmore Farms, we have a Homewood Suites by Hilton, which is extended stay. It's not, folks do rent by the night, but it is not all of our customers. We have folks that rent for several days, weeks, and months. So we are in the extended stay business, as is Residence Inn and many other extended stay hotels here in Asheville. It's important that we understand that this is a problem within the hotel business and for the county. I can't emphasize enough, we thank all our customers and intend on them being great folks that follow all rules and are great customers, coming to a Hilton for, you know, 100, 150, $200 a day. If that was the case, we wouldn't feel the need to have security guards, but we do, and I think most of these hotels do as well. We hire full-time security from Buncombe County Sheriff's Department to stay at our hotels. And again, no, it's not for the 99% of the people that stay in our hotel. It is for the, when we have a problem. And I can't emphasize enough that our county, as a county, we need to represent when folks come here to vacation, and we advertise and market to them, that they're going to be in a safe environment. While that, no one can guarantee that 100%, our hotels and all hotels in Buncombe County, as far as I know, go to great lengths to provide security, to provide safety, to provide fire safety, to be up to the codes, and to provide anything and everything that we can do for the safety and security of our guests. And from what I have even heard in this session this morning, that becomes very difficult when you're simply renting a home out for a few nights to someone you don't know, and there is no one there to be secure and to see that that happens. No security, no management, and so forth. So again, and our folks, by the way, too, they do eat at an extended stay. We have a kitchen in our hotels, so we are in that business as well. But I urge you to look at the safety, security regulations that the hotel and bed and breakfast industry follow. And I can't imagine it being able to do that just on a voluntarily basis without the authority that sees to it that folks that come here are going to have a safe and secure vacation. So I appreciate you hearing me. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next. Again, please state your name and where you're from.
My name is Andy Brockmeyer. I am a resident of the city of Asheville. I am not a Realtor. I support vacation rentals. I believe that, although I'm sorry, a lot of folks have had a bad experience being next to vacation rentals, I feel that people are overreacting. The folks who own vacation rentals have to keep their places to a higher standard, I believe, than most hotels, or their business would fall off. They rely on repeat customers. I also encourage you all to not underestimate the value of attracting a tourist. More tourists to this area can only benefit the economy further. I've been a resident here for eight years, and I grew up out west in Santa Fe, New Mexico, where my mother has a vacation rental cottage next to her house. She relies upon that income and her social security to get by. Without having the ability to do what she wants to with her property, she would be limited in her financial resources. I grew up there, and I enjoyed meeting the different people that would come through and stay at her guesthouse. I have found that when I used to work in the service industry, people who come to visit a town, a tourist-based town like this, are quite enjoyable, interesting, and most often affluent people who are here to spend money. And a lot of them don't want the sanitized feel of a hotel, or the dorm room type of feel of the bed and breakfast experience. So I would encourage the county to let people do what they want with their properties. Also, it has been suggested that there's a 30% occupancy rate with hotels and vacation rentals. Not sure if that's accurate, but I don't see that increasing the traffic a lot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brockmeyer. Next. Morning.
My name's Sparrow Wood. I live in Fairview in the Butler Highland, where several of my neighbors have spoke already. But we've, we moved there, and we thought it was a single-family, no businesses. And this house was built at the same time I was building my house. And I have two teenage daughters, and who are active runners in high school sports. There's a circuit of several miles, you can run 5, 10 Ks up there, all behind a gate. It's great. But now, there's renters in here that, and people coming through, groups of 10 cars, 12 cars, sometimes all guys, sometimes mixed families. But now, I'm, I feel nervous when my daughters go to run. So that's one point. But the fact that they're a business, I think, is something that, you know, we have our own covenants against it, and there's, right now, it's caused a split in the neighborhood, and we're trying to figure it out. But thank you.
Thank you. Lady in the rear, please.
Hello, my name is Valerie Laraya. I live in Montford. I own the Appington Green Bed and Breakfast, as I have for 18 years now. That means I was around pre-UDO in Asheville, as well as post. And I would like to briefly address this group, if I can, representing bed and breakfast in general, as well as specifically my own in particular. I would like to reiterate the notion of guest safety when it comes to short-term rental, specifically. We have, again, all of the fire inspections and so on that go along with our properties. You don't have to be a big hotel to be subject to that. It is our job to make sure that the people who stay with us are happy, but they're also safe. Secondly, bed and breakfast, as well as other properties of larger size, pay the county room tax. We are stable, well-maintained properties who make significant contributions to the GDP in this area. We agree with the gentleman who spoke just now about wanting tourists to come. Clearly, we do. We always have, and we accommodate them very well. And I can assure you, they do not stay in dorm rooms. Thirdly, the issue of the supervision, I think, or lack of that, is what is central to many of the neighbors, and was, in fact, in the neighborhoods, including my own, in the discussion of the Asheville issue, and clearly by the people who are behind me here living in Fairview. A bed and breakfast in Asheville is required to have an onsite manager or full-time resident, aka me in this case, the innkeeper, living there. And that, the purpose of that was created in the UDO and so on, to make sure that guests would also be safe and supervised. It's not always that they're going to be doing bad things, but if somebody needs help, that you have someone onsite who can actually help them, whether it's get to a hospital or whatever it is they need to do. Going on about the issue of supervision and then by enforcement, it looks as if the neighbors feel as if they are the only ones, and in fact, they are, the only ones who can supervise a rental property next to them. Empty houses in residential zones that are even vacation rentals, you can be assured that the neighborhoods, the neighbors will never know whether the person who just walked in there was in fact a renter, rather than a squatter, rather than a vandal, rather than a thief. The neighborhoods don't have any idea what is certainty in that regard, which makes the neighborhood unsafe by its very nature. That forcing the enforcement of something like this onto the neighbors themselves is an unfair thing to do. And it does seem that Buncombe County has many, many zones in which residential, that are non-residential, in the technical sense, anyway, where the mountain view cabin and home that everyone is looking for already exists, or can exist, in perfect consonance with the zoning and with the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Over here first, please.
My name is Chip Craig. I'm the owner of Greybeard Realty, and we specialize in vacation rentals. I want to thank you all for letting me speak today and hearing this. Couple of things I'd like to bring up on some comments that I heard today. We do pay taxes. We pay use tax and sales tax. My little firm last year paid $75,000 in occupancy tax and $148,000 in sales tax. The current, Asheville does have a zoning ordinance that restricts vacation rentals. And I do not operate my business in Asheville, because that would be illegal. But you still have tons and tons of vacation rentals in Asheville. This current ordinance is before, the current ordinance, as it stands now, is complaint-driven that the county has. So what's going to happen is you're going to drive companies like me out of business, the ones that do pay the taxes. And what you're going to end up with is a bunch of people that don't have onsite management, that don't respond when there's a complaint like we do. And I'm very sorry about the people that are in Butler Mountain. That would not be my vacation rental house. I would not do that. We would be there. We're on-call 24 hours a day. It sounds like they have a really bad house in Butler Mountain. I currently have three vacation houses adjacent to my house. I live in Montreat. I have 125 within a mile of my house. I don't have a problem with vacation rentals in my area. It's a very self-selecting crowd. We do not, vacationers do not want to be in a neighborhood. They don't want to feel like they're in Charlotte. They want to feel like they're in the mountains, so they like privacy. There's two issues that have come up, really, about, from the hotel industry. Safety and regulations and competition. Number one, safety. These are the same houses that you guys live in. They have four, six, three, two bedrooms. They're not huge hotels. I mean, why is it safe for somebody to be there for, you know, as a full-time resident, but if they come for a weekend, it's all of a sudden unsafe? I don't understand that. We don't serve food. We do have a certain standard, that we have fire extinguishers in all levels, smoke detectors in every bedroom. Again, if you get rid of the property managers like you could, we won't be there around to inspect. And we do inspect our houses once a year with a safety inspection. And if we go over 15, we have to fall back, and we don't do that, but we have to, if we have over 15 houses, then we have to go and do a huge safety inspection, like similar to a hotel. We don't compete with hotels. I mean, I keep, I talk to our vacation rental, the people that take reservations. Do we compete? How often do they compare a hotel to a house? And they say it never happens. And it's true, the same person may stay in a hotel one vacation, or may stay in a house the next. I went down with my wife recently to Hilton Head, and we stayed in a hotel. In August, we're going to get down there, we're staying in a house, because it's family-driven. Biltmore Forest allows vacation rentals. They encourage vacation, or they have vacation rentals. It's not a bad thing. Last point, I find it hard to believe, and this may upset some folks, that you would limit individual property rights because of fear of competition from the hotel industry. And that just does not seem right to me. Thank you all, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The lady in green, would you like to come up, I think?
Thank you, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
I just have a very few brief comments to make today to you all.
State your name, please.
Yes, my name is Patty Wiles, and I am, my husband and I own at Cumberland Falls Bed and Breakfast Inn. I think the thing that really drew us to Asheville is its heart and its community and its real desire to keep that intact. I have a unique perspective to bring. We came here from Monroe County, Florida, in the Florida Keys. We lived in a place called Port Largo. Port Largo was a lovely community. It was a lovely neighborhood setting. Kids were safe. Everybody knew each other. We all walked in the evening. Everybody knew who was supposed to be here. Everybody knew who wasn't. Port Largo began this vacation rental thing. It was, it was really the destruction of the neighborhood. In Key Largo, really, a lot of the homes are, people just build, they live in Miami, and they then travel on the weekend only to come and stay in their homes. I think they basically decided it would be a means by which to get money and income, so they started renting these homes. The entire character of our neighborhood changed. I agree totally with the gentleman who said about his kids out doing the running. You don't know where your kids are anymore. You don't know your neighbors. You don't know what your, who your neighbors are. You have no control. You have no control whatsoever. Safety becomes an issue. Further, in economic times, as we currently have, where these places may go empty for a very long time, as they did in our neighborhood. That creates problems of its own kind as well. These houses are burglarized because they are not occupied by people that are known. When people who are not known are there, residents are much less likely to understand whether these are vacation people or others. Drug use began to be a serious problem. Other problems happened in the neighborhood as well. Teenage kids occupying these homes for a period of time in the evening. It's something we all, Asheville's a great place. I mean, we have such community heart here. We really strive to do the right thing here. We strive to have our community belong to us and for us to feel safe within it. Our neighborhoods need to remain that. They need to be neighborhoods. They need to be filled with people that we know. We need to have some accountability as to who these people are, and I hope you guys will give this really good and serious thought. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? You.
My name is Mary Bridges, and I was at the last meeting also. I have a bed and breakfast in town, and I have vacation rentals in the county. So, and then, you know, I'm a resident of Asheville as well, so have different reasons for wanting to be here. I do feel for the Butler Mountain. That does sound like a bad issue or circumstance there that needs to be resolved. I hope they can get that resolved. I do, the reason that these are here is because of economics. There's a demand for it. People want to come here, and that's what they want to buy. And I'm a capitalist. I believe in free enterprise, and I think it's a great way for Asheville to create ways for people to make a living. I think it's a great kind of industry for our town, rather than other kinds of industry. And we have a great demand for it, and therefore, there's a supply, and it's going to be there. Hopefully, it could be, I agree that some kind of regulation would hopefully make it, one, the city and the county can get more money from it, perhaps, and also making it safe for everyone to be involved with. As an owner of these properties since before 2009, is that it? It would actually probably be to my benefit to not have these allowed, because I'm grandfathered in, perhaps. And so, I don't, the market is, you know, getting more and more saturated. It's not, it's really to my benefit to not have other people be able to do it, but I just am such a strong believer that tourism is such a great thing for our city and county, and it's a great way to bring people into the town. My properties all have to get inspected, just as the B&amp;B does, a little differently. My insurance won't allow me not to have it inspected, and it's fire and many, many other safety kinds of things. So perhaps something, without having to reinvent the wheel, as simple as having people show a certificate of insurance that proves that, I mean, it's, we live in a litigious country. It would, it would be, well, in any event, it's not to my benefit to not have insurance. Anyway, perhaps that would be a great way to, easy way to show that inspections have occurred. Fire, lighting, all kinds of safety things. Spa, hot tub kinds of things. Let's see, what else? I think also, we're comparing city, sometimes mixing city concerns with county concerns, and that worries me a little bit when I hear the conversations. I think they're different. I think we're also mixing sometimes big business or bigger business and really teeny, small businesses. And I think that covers it. I'm very much in support of having vacation rentals as a wonderful way to provide business, and I think it's safe for our neighborhoods as well. There's actually an organization called SmartGrowth.org, if anybody wants to review it, that does have eight principles, and mixed use is indicated in that for our residential neighborhoods. And they imply that mixed-use zoning actually increases safety in our neighborhoods. But anyway, if anybody wants to look that up, that's SmartGrowth.org. It's a national organization. Those principles are pretty interesting.
Thank you very much. Next, I believe I saw one or two other hands. Is there Mr. Gumpert?
My name's Al Gumpert, resident of Buncombe County. I think we've had a lot of good comments this morning. I would say the current zoning ordinance provides protection for residential neighborhoods from encroachment, from business operations, and now this board, once again, wants to consider giving access to our neighborhoods through special interest groups of realtors, investors, and property managers. These folks would bring business operations that would be, frankly, intrusive. I think one of the best comments this morning was that you become dependent on neighbors to police what's going on at a rental, a vacation rental. And that's not something I want to do. I'm sure it's not something you want to do. And we've had an unpleasant experience in our neighborhood as well, where suddenly we found the property that had been sold was being rented out as a party house, frankly. And it took a good bit of effort upon the part of some of my neighbors to shut that down. The idea that communities can be well-protected or well-served by covenants is not true. Most covenants don't cover this issue, because it was never conceived that you would even think of having short-term rentals in a residential district. It becomes very hard to change covenants. And when you even have a covenant, it requires that you go to law to enforce a covenant. And most of us are not willing to get into a litigious type of activity, if we can avoid it. So we're dependent on the county to protect its residential neighborhoods. And from my reading of the original proposal, there's really no enforcement. You're not considering, if you're talking about a single-home rental, you're not considering the parking situation, you're not considering the safety, you're not considering the maximum occupation of the residents. You're issuing a blank check. And it's a, you're suggesting it be a permitted use, not a conditional use. If it were to be a conditional use, there would at least be public notification, neighbor notification, and a public hearing. This becomes a stealth-type thing. You know, most people, most of the public won't know what's happened until it's happened. I request that each of you consider how you would feel about having your neighborhood invaded by rental property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gumpert. Do we have anyone else?
Well, seeing no one else that's interested in coming up and speaking today, we'll just close the public comment item on our agenda and move forward. I want to thank everybody, and I appreciate all the interest. I think it's very healthy to get the comments that we did today. I wasn't here. I actually had to leave the meeting early, I think, when this original language was passed back in early March or February, whenever it was. So I didn't have a chance to go through the public hearing process, but I think today's exercise has been beneficial for me. I'm sure it has for my peers as well. And as I discussed a little earlier, I think what we'll do is move forward with asking staff to give us information from comparable situations around the nation, locally and this type of thing. Again, the goal to be, being goal, hopefully, we can adhere to it, is to come back here in June and at our next meeting, which will be two weeks from today, and discuss a retooling of the language that we previously sent to the county commissioners. Does anyone else have anything to offer on the board this morning regarding this?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to reinforce your request to the staff to look at what other communities are doing. We're not the first one to have to struggle with this issue. And I think it's really important to see the ones that are working and how they're working, and what they had to do to make it work.
Okay, I agree with you. I agree with you. Again, I want to thank everyone. I think it's been a healthy exercise, and I'm sure we'll be hearing from you again. Again, the timeline would probably be, what, I guess, a public hearing sometime in July, maybe, after we retool this language. But I'm sure you'll keep abreast of it. Again, thank you very much. All right, the last item on our agenda is adjourned. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. We got two. We got two. Okay, all in favor say aye. Thank you.
Boy, that's a toughie.
I think it was wrong.
I think it was, yeah.
We got to have, they got to have.